Our council to our city council study session for the morning of February the 18th, 2021. I note that Mr. Thompson is not with us, but Mr. Brady, am I correct that Mr. Thompson's not feeling well and won't be with us today?
That's correct, Mayor. He is currently waiting to get a kidney stone removed, so hopefully he'll be feeling better soon.
Okay, well, we speed him up, wish him a speedy recovery, and we'll press on. First item on our agenda for this meeting, council, is to review and discuss the items on the agenda for the February 22nd, a regular city council meeting, so if you please refer to that document. I know one of the items on the agenda is the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance, and we do have a staff presentation on that up next, following the review of this agenda. Mr. Brady, is there anything else on Monday night's agenda that you know that we ought to get a staff briefing on?
Mayor, I don't know if we necessarily, we could do a brief staff briefing, but I just, I wanted the council just to be aware, I'm sorry, I'm gonna just make sure I find the right number for you. There is an item.
What, Beth, is it?
Eight. Sorry, I was looking in the nines, yes. An eight D where we are, this is action that we're asking the council to authorize us to move forward with authority to acquire property with eminent domain. I know that's a very sensitive subject or topic, and we are very sensitive to using that, but in this case, we just want to be clear with the council that we actually have agreements with most, all of these property owners, nearly all the property owners, for the purchase of their property. We've agreed to terms on the amounts, the necessity for the eminent domain, and as understood by all the property owners, is just the time it takes, we have to acquire the property and have it in our possession earlier than it would take for us to go through a normal acquisition process because of the federal funding we have for these road improvements. So all of the properties have been, all the property owners have been contacted, that we've been working with them for months, they understand the need for it. Some of these are actually anxious for us to get these roads built so that their developments can move forward, but I just want to share that with council. We just want to be very transparent and clear when we're using eminent domain for public necessity, but in this case, I think we are very comfortable in telling the council that all, all the property owners not only are in agreement with the property that's being taken to provide roads to their, roads that will access or adjacent to their properties, but in almost all cases, we've already agreed upon the terms, the value of the property to be acquired, and so this is really more of a necessity in order for us to expedite the acquisition of the property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions regarding items on the agenda? Mr. Luna?
No, Mayor, I'm comfortable moving forward with the eminent domain as requested by the city of Mesa.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Brady, this is property out in southeast Mesa, adjacent to the proposed 24 freeway extension, is that correct?
Yeah, the 24 signal view to Williamsville, that and that area, so yes, it's, it's all part of that, the development out there. And just also remind the council, significant for Monday will be the opportunity for council to appoint a new city auditor and also adopt that employment contract, and then as council will recall, based on last week's interviews and decisions, direction that you gave the city staff, you'll also be appointing two city magistrates, Stephanie O'Leahann and Stephen Umpelby as city magistrates, so that will also happen on Monday.
So we're swearing them in at the beginning of the meeting, and then once they're hooked, we're approving their contracts later on in the meeting, right?
Well, the, the contract we'll be approving will be for the city auditor, yes.
Oh, okay. Right, city auditor, city clerk, city attorney, city manager are all on there, but we'll go ahead and swear in, oh, appoint Mr. Listano, and then we'll swear in the two magistrates.
That's correct, Mayor.
Great. Council, yes, Vice Mayor Duff?
I just had a question on items seven C through F. Usually it has a 20% contingency, and this is on landscape maintenance, city properties, city facilities. The contingency is 20%, usually I see like a 5% contingencies on contracts. Is this higher to cover possible repairs of systems, or I just want to understand that a little bit more?
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, I'm Andrea Moore with Parks Wrecking Community Facilities, and we do 20% on our service contracts that allow us to put extra work if we have additional cleanups or irrigation repairs, leaks, anything like that, re-landscaping that we need to include in that contract. So that's why it's typical for all of our service contracts to go to 20%.
But Vice Mayor Duff, you are correct, on construction contracts, that would be a much smaller contingency, as you were pointing out.
Okay, I just wanted to become more familiar with that, so thank you.
I just wonder on the, on the landscaping contracts, does that play a role when we have storm damage or extraordinary things that happen that might require landscaping services beyond the norm, or is that separately accounted for?
Mayor, that's correct. Storm cleanup, any kind of re-landscaping, or anything unusual that happens, any irrigation repairs, anything like that goes under that extra work.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. Question about seven B, replacement of fire apparatus. I know that's our ongoing protocol for their city. Just maybe an update on that, what are we replacing and for what purposes?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, thank you for the question. So we are replacing old apparatus, the apparatus that we're replacing, they all have over 200,000 miles on it, and so those apparatus will go into the reserve status, and that's what we're replacing with the four new ones.
$3.2 million. I just want to recognize that we're always updating our fleet so that we can provide our public service and accountability to the residents that we serve, and also the automatic aid that we perform for our community and neighboring communities, so thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Council, other questions regarding Monday's agenda? All right, thank you, seeing none. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is item 2A, that's to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on a proposed nondiscrimination ordinance. I want to thank Andrea Alacot and Jim Smith and Jacqueline Garnier and others who have worked so hard on this, and anxiously looking forward to this presentation, but I know prior to this, a lot of work has gone into working on this ordinance, and just want to express my thanks for those who've been working on this issue, not just for months, but actually for years in the community, so having said that, I'm not sure who's there to make the presentation, but please proceed.
But Andrea.
Good morning, Mayor, this is Andrea Alacot, Mayor and Council, we appreciate being here this morning. I'm Andrea Alacot, I'm the diversity administrator, and with me this morning is Jackie Garnier, one of our senior assistant city attorneys, and of course, our city attorney, Jim Smith, will also be helping us with this conversation. So we are here to discuss some of the highlights of the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance that is introduced for conversation on your Monday 22nd agenda. The purpose and the intent of the nondiscrimination ordinance for Mesa is to ensure that our Mesa's diverse population have equality and equal access to goods and services within our community, as well as equal treatment in employment and when obtaining housing. It will apply to our businesses and places of public accommodation, employers and their workplaces, our city employees, facilities, and contract and vendors. As common with many nondiscrimination ordinances across the nation, but more particularly comparable to those within our own state, that would be Phoenix, Tucson, Flagstaff, Tempe, Sedona, and Winslow, we do have exclusions listed within our proposed draft, and those include federal government or state agencies and political subdivisions, religious, public or charter schools, religious corporations and organizations, public accommodations that are beneficial to our communities, such as senior citizen living areas or military discounts, and then speech and expressive activities, and the free exercise of religion as protected under the First Amendment.
Mayor and council, if I may just interrupt briefly, first of all, good morning, Mayor and Council, good to be with you this morning on this topic, and as Andrea pointed out, that this is, this ordinance, both in its application and in its exclusions, we looked at other cities, including Flagstaff and Tucson and in Tempe, that have had their ordinances around seven years, so almost, almost 10 years now, and, and the draft that we sent with you, just so you know, we're going to update it just slightly on the, on the First Amendment language, on as far as expressive activities, because we found, just, we want to have greater consistency between both expressive activities and speech and free exercise of religion. I will say, one way in which our ordinance is slightly different than others is that we've articulated those First Amendment rights even more robustly than our neighboring cities, and so we've fully articulated that we recognize those First Amendment rights within this, within this ordinance. You'll see just some slight modifications from the draft that you received this last week, when we repost the ordinance later today, and that will be obviously discussed at the council meeting on Monday.
So then for the implementation, it's going to be administered through the city manager and his designees, which should include myself and with the city attorney's office. There is no additional funding or staffing that will be required, as it'll be incorporated in our existing workload, and complaints can be filed within 90 days of violations. We do want to again point out, other, those other cities that I had mentioned previously with similar ordinances have reported a very low volume of complaints, and from that low volume of complaints, they have been able to resolve a lot of those through referrals, through education opportunities, or through mediation, which is something that we paid close attention to when we were drafting our resolution process. So the, the resolution process is specifically allowing us to be able to address complaints through informal means, such as warnings or notices, and we were more explicit that within the first violation, we are required to seek resolution through mediation or alternative means. And then for second or subsequent violations, we will still be able to use those tools at our disposal to seek resolution, again, through alternative means or through mediation by providing educational opportunities, assisting both parties with involved in the complaint before moving on to any citation. Should we need to move into a citation process, that would be handled through our civil hearing officer and would follow all of our standard civil penalties and actions as listed on the screen. If passed, the ordinance, if the ordinance passes, excuse me, we will allow 120 days until it is effective, so that way we can really engage our public in providing the education needed to our business community, to our employers, and to make the public feel comfortable in regards to what the legal language states in a more friendly and user-friendly fashion. So we will be engaging our community and the business with online forums, web pages, we will have informational videos and fact sheets, and will of course partner with agencies that have already committed to assisting us in this work, to be able to distribute it within their populations and built-in organizations. So with that, we are happy to entertain any questions or feedback that you have for us as we prepare for that final draft that will be on your agenda Monday.
Thank you, Andrea. Council, any initial questions on this topic? Yes, Mr. Freeman?
Thanks, Mayor, I'll just jump right into it, might as well, right, so good morning. I didn't hear about all the other, if you're an employer, how many employees would be exempt if you were an employer? And also, you talked about other communities, I have several questions, so I'll, if you don't get them all the first time, I can repeat them, but you said other cities have had some complaints, and you said very low, what's very low? And have any of these complaints gone to court or any type of mediation?
Thank you.
I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Freeman, we appreciate those questions. To address your first statement, within our ordinance currently, it would apply to an employer that has one or more employees, so essentially all businesses within our community, or employers within our community. In regards to the other Arizona cities, more specifically, the very low volume of complaints, they have reported that in terms of just simple inquiries, an average number was less than 15 inquiries, of those being actual filed complaints, an average was two, within the past several years within all of our, again, Arizona communities. And within the past several years, none of those have gone through the citation process, they were all able to be addressed either through community education or an informal mediation process.
Okay, very good. Is it typical for the city manager to receive these complaints? I know our city manager has a lot on his plate, but does that the typical pass-through for a complaint process, and then the diversity outreach office?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Freeman. It is typical within the nondiscrimination ordinance to address the process to be through the city manager, and he being able to designate a designee, so there's a variety of designees when looking at that process nationwide, but for the state of Arizona, it is typically either someone within a diversity administrative role, or within the city manager's office directly, of which I am both.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is, I know I've had some of my small business constituents reach out, and they would like it, talked about the one employee, or could there be a higher employee number for exemption for small businesses? And currently, I would support, and I'll just put it out there, support a higher employee number for small businesses instead of one, so with that, I mean, I can throw a number out, I know Flagstaff, I believe, Andrea, is that 15 or 14?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Freeman, correct. Within the state of Arizona, Flagstaff is the only city that has it designated at 15, all other cities within Arizona have it at one or more.
Okay, all right, yeah, I'd be supportive of a higher number, so I'll listen to my colleagues, and I'll, I'll, right now, that's all the questions I have, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Council, other questions? Councilmember Spilsbury?
I think, is it, California has five or more employees, and Utah has 15 in their NDOs, is that correct? I'm not sure if that's correct.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Spilsbury. California does have it at five or more, however, theirs is a statewide ordinance, which, or statewide act, I believe it is, and that one is actually very proactive in the affirmative action, in which they require employee training, they require varying notices, so it's much more extensive on what they require the business and employers to do, which had then adjusted that low, the threshold for the employee numbers because of the requirements that it mandates onto those employers, which is not something that we are doing with our proposed draft. Salt Lake City did have it at 15, and as is several other cities within the nation.
Okay, I mean, the concern I've heard is just that if you maybe had a business out of your home or your garage, and you wanted to just employ a neighbor or a family member or something, that you didn't want to, yeah, have those same restrictions or something, if you had a smaller business, is what I've heard. I also wanted to just clarify, so this means that businesses can still have male and female designated areas, just that they would allow someone who identifies as a different gender, which can already happen, I was under the assumption that can already happen, so does that change anything?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Spilsbury, for that very important question, yes, that is absolutely correct, what you stated. Businesses will still be able to have single-sex designated areas, such as restrooms, dressing rooms, fitting rooms, et cetera. However, what this ordinance will require or allow is that a person identifying as that particular single sex would be allowed to use that particular facility.
If you don't mind, following up on Councilmember Spilsbury's question, I'm not Andrea, or Jim, or Jackie, the employment, the definition of sex as it applies to employment, I know has been the subject of recent US Supreme Court cases, and, and so it seems like some of this is, is already by federal law, in workplace and housing, the federal rules have already expanded to include gender identity and sexual orientation, is that correct or or not?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Yes, Mayor, that is correct, so there was a Supreme Court case that came out this summer, July of 2020, Bostock versus Clayton County, Georgia, and in that case, they did hold that sex does include gender identity and sexual orientation, that was an employment case for purposes of employment, and there has recently been an executive order that has come down directing federal agencies, and that would certainly implicate housing to recognize gender identity and sexual orientation as protected classes.
So would it be fair to say that this ordinance really, given that housing and perhaps, housing and employment have already somewhat covered by expansions of federal law, the area of public accommodation is really where this ordinance might be more impactful, am I correct in that?
Mayor, yes, I believe you're correct in that, this is really, public accommodations is the, the larger area that this ordinance addresses.
And to the issue of public accommodations, I know, for the last several years, a big part of the controversy around these cases is centered around people of faith, feeling, worrying about protecting their, their freedom of expression and their freedom of religion, if they'd have closely-held beliefs that perhaps would, that they think would prevent them from providing, you know, the classic example, I guess, is wedding cake decorations, things like that. Has that issue evolved, and I believe there's been an Arizona Supreme Court case on, on that topic, am I correct on that?
Mayor, yes, you're correct, that case is Brush &amp; Nib, that came out, I believe in 2019, and that was the case that addressed an art studio that, that their business was making wedding invitations and other types of products for weddings, and in that case, the, the art studio itself, the entire business was not exempted as a blanket exemption from the Phoenix City ordinance as applied, but what they looked at in that case was their custom wedding invitations, where they were, it was determined that their custom invitations were their artwork, their expression, they were using their creativity to put forth their message, and the, the court said that they could not be required to, through their art, which was determined to be pure speech under the First Amendment, to express a message that they did not agree with, or that was contrary to their sincerely-held religious beliefs, and there's a number of examples of other creative artistic types of activities that fall with, under, fall under speech, under the First Amendment, and we have, you know, as Jim mentioned earlier, been very specific and robust in making clear that, yes, those First Amendment protections are going to be respected and followed and honored as they are set forth under federal law.
Okay, thank you. I know that there's, there's some important areas where we have exclusions in this ordinance, I believe we mentioned schools, churches, same-sex sporting leagues, such as, you know, girls softball leagues, can, what other exclusions are built into this ordinance, perhaps, in addition to schools and churches and, and youth sports leagues?
You want to go back to that slide? Mayor, as we're going back to that slide, I'll give Andrea a second as we try to find it, and I'll follow up on what Jackie just said, as you, as you look, if people have a copy of it, it's six dash 14 dash four, that's where the exclusions are, and you'll see, many of these exclusions, we've taken from other municipalities that have had their ordinances in effect, but we've also added additional ones, for example, the exclusion under number four, for religious corporations and associations, and for their schools, is nearly identical to several of the cities, but in addition to that, we also, if you look at number six, the exclusion for speech, expressive activities, and free exercise of religion, an exclusion that basically mirrors the concept that you, that's in the Brush &amp; Nib case, and so I think we're the only city that has articulated that expressly, and so, and then of course, we also, if you look at exclusion number five, for expressive association, the, for, for also First Amendment right.
Mayor, oh, sorry, I also wanted to point out, one of the exclusions is, it's an interesting exclusion, it kind of flips it the other way, so this ordinance does not prohibit a business from asking any, or from removing anyone from their business who would be engaging in, in what the state calls boisterous conduct, or disorderly conduct, or criminal behavior within a facility, so that activity is not protected under this ordinance, and certainly could be, you know, any individual misbehaving, behaving inappropriately, committing any crimes, is not protected under this ordinance, so that is an exclusion as well.
Thank you, I think that's a point that we need to underline here, because I think one of the rumors that's used to raise doubts about these types of ordinances are kind of scary scenarios where, you know, a person with, with, with bad intent, you know, is allowed to go into a, for example, a woman's restroom and do mischief, you know, either intimidate, or, I mean, is that, is that type of behavior allowable now, and would this ordinance have, in some way, make that okay?
It is not allowable now, of course, anybody that would be going into a restroom, or locker room, or any place in a public accommodation, committing, as you say, you know, frankly, criminal behavior, any, any, you know, nefarious leering, anything like that, that would not be allowed now, and that is not allowed after, if this ordinance is passed, that will still not be allowed. This ordinance is not a free pass to engage in criminal or inappropriate conduct.
Thank you, those were some of my questions, Council, Frankie, go ahead.
Yeah, just to, just to go back to the question on if a business has to spend on anything based on this ordinance, be that if you're a one-person business or a 500-person business, is that something that we are saying that you have to, you have to spend in order to, spend some money in order to comply with this ordinance?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Hareya. In order for the implementation of this ordinance, it will not require any business to have to spend any money, or have to do any sort of physical adjustments to their place of business, other than to comply with, again, the, the intention of this ordinance, which is to provide equal services within goods, services, housing, and employment, and of course, to help promote our inclusivity as a community.
Thank you.
To Mr. Hareya's point, I mean, again, some of the, sometimes people who oppose these ordinances like to characterize them as quote-unquote bathroom ordinances, I don't see the word bathroom mentioned at all in this ordinance, is, to what extent, I mean, is it still, just underscore what was just said, businesses will continue to be, have male and female bathrooms, is that correct, or is there any, any change in the, in the status quo that this ordinance would require?
Thank you, Mayor, to, yes, very explicitly put, businesses can continue to operate just as they do today, they are, we do not have a reference to bathrooms, as we do address that within our public accommodations, and the ability for places of public accommodation to allow single-sex use areas, so that does address restrooms, it can address fitting rooms, changing rooms, nursing rooms, we want to continue to be able to have those things operate within our community, just as they're doing today. It would things operate within our community, just as they're doing today. It would be doing so with allowing a person to use those facilities with the gender that they identify. But a business will not be required in any way to have to retrofit any physical part of their business or place of accommodation to meet this ordinance.
Thank you. Council, other questions? Yes, Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I did a cursory research in terms of how many businesses we had on the city of Mesa. Data derived from MAGC. So it looks like we have 13,000 businesses and close to 160,000 employees. At least 11,000 businesses have less than 15 employees. I want to, you know, reinforce the notion that I don't want to go beyond one employee. I think what that does essentially is, by expanding to 15, then you have 15 employees that aren't protected by the NDO. So my position that we maintain the current language, you know, Mayor, I've been here, that's, I'm going to through my eighth year, and we started this, working on this ordinance, I think in 2014. I remember Debbie Spinner, we had the conversation about this. It's been a long process. And I'm very comfortable with the current language in terms of our, the amount of employees protected. I would like to go ahead and keep it at one, based on what we're hearing from Phoenix and Tempe and our neighboring cities. It's not really an issue. What it does present itself is a teachable moment to some businesses in our community. Our, our role is not to have a big stick, it's to encourage and to teach them the importance of nondiscrimination. And that's really what we're trying to achieve here. So I would prefer keeping it at, let's not go beyond the one employee.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Duff?
Yes, thank you. And I do agree wholeheartedly with what Councilmember Luna said and agree. I don't think discrimination at, for one person is okay. Certainly don't, in businesses, it's not okay at any point. And this is a way, like Councilmember Luna shared, to really look at being inclusive and accepting people as human beings, and not labels of what they think they are, who they are, but truly as human beings with human rights, not to be discriminated against. And I wanted to thank the whole team, the legal team at the city of Mesa. I know they've worked at this a long time, and it's been a long time coming from our city. I'm so proud that we're coming forward. I've received so many comments positive from businesses for economic development, businesses that look at coming to our city, look to see if we have a nondiscrimination ordinance. It is a value of theirs. And also for tourism, tourism is rated that. I noticed I was on Zillow a few months ago, and it was rated whether we had nondiscrimination for buying a home in our city. So this is becoming mainstay and something we all need to stand for and recognize people as people and nothing else. So I'm in support of this retaining at employment at one person. And I think it's a great ordinance, and I think it's been successful in other places. And I'll be proud that Mesa has passed this next week. My hopes that we are going to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Duff. I'd like to weigh in a little on the employment, the threshold for employment enforcement. I certainly would agree that we don't want to turn a blind eye to discrimination at any level. On the other hand, I am sympathetic to, and I have had conversations with businesspeople who describe, you know, rather intimate work situations, you know, where if you're a microbusiness and it's really essentially a family business, it's one or two, three people, you know, they work in close quarters, and it's, that there ought to be some acknowledgement, you know, that that's something akin to a marriage, or, you know, just a very, it's difficult, you know, for, to come in and put a lot of, or take away a lot of discretion from who you get to work with in those very close-quarter situations. And Andrea, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, is the federal threshold for like an EEOC complaint, or if the labor disputes, is that number 15 employees?
Yes, Mayor, it is.
Okay. So I just wonder if we have a threshold that below that number, if, if we might become a, an attractive forum, you know, for people to bring labor disputes, maybe not even, you know, of all stripes, and characterize them as fitting underneath this ordinance, because that's their, the only place they can go if they're less than 15 employees. They can't pursue it in an EEOC setting. I just, I, my goal for this ordinance would be for it to be, and I guess all the other cities around us are at one employee. So that kind of argues against the point I'm trying to make here. But I don't want to, to be the place where people bring their labor disputes because they, they can't take it to the, you know, another forum. So I would entertain, frankly, raising that number just a little bit to, just to acknowledge the, the unique situation of very small businesses and allow some discretion in those settings. But I can see that there's, that people that I, whose opinions I respect don't necessarily agree with me. Mr. Freeman, I see your hand up.
Thank you. I understand my colleagues, Councilmember Luna and Vice Mayor Duff. You know, I think at some point, we have to understand government's role in our business applications. And I just think we should have a limited role. And that's why I'm going to support a higher number. I'll just tell you right off the bat. I don't think that we, I think having a higher number is less restrictive to our businesses. And if we have businesses that are not playing right, we can always come back, counsel in the future, tweak it and make it less if we're having a problem as a community. And I know you can say, well, let's just do it at one now. But I don't see it that way. I just see that we could, we're kind of crossed the line here. Is it a moral issue? Is it a government issue? Is it a business issue? And I just think pragmatically, we can have a higher number, move forward, have a hybrid ordinance. And I've talked to Councilmember Thompson, and I know he's not here to say it in his own words, but he would support a higher number as well. And he used a higher number than we're talking about now. But that's his, for him to weigh in. But I just want you to know that, that from our colleague, from him. But with that, I understand some of the legal ramifications. And I just think a higher number is more beneficial for our small businesses. And if we have a problem, then maybe education through our diversity office will benefit them as well. So thanks, and I'll stop there.
Mayor?
Thank you. Yes, I'm about to tee you up here, Mr. Brady. Mr. Brady, even though Mr. Thompson's not with us because he's not feeling well, he did give Mr. Brady a statement to read. And if you don't mind, I'm going to ask him to do that now, because it seems like it might fit into our, our discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. So, Mayor, Council, Councilmember Thompson provided the statement that he asked me to read this morning regarding this item. His quote, open quote, "After reviewing the latest version of the draft language of the nondiscrimination ordinance, I felt it was necessary to outline my concerns and my thoughts. As I communicated to staff, and as I still believe today, a nondiscrimination ordinance is not necessary, and it's honestly a solution looking for a problem. I strongly believe that Mesa is a welcoming and diverse community, and I am proud that we have all types of people living in our community in harmony. However, I am also sympathetic to those in the LGBTQ community that feel that there may be discrimination in our community, and I am supportive of doing all we can to eliminate any and all types of discrimination. While I have reservations about the need for the proposed ordinance, I am open to compromise that strikes a balance between the need to protect religious liberties and organizations while prohibiting discrimination in employment and housing. It is our civic duty to find that balance between protecting civil liberties without encroaching upon religious beliefs. Again, I want to reiterate that I do not support discrimination of any kind against anyone. Therefore, I have outlined my concerns with the current draft, with the current draft nondiscrimination ordinance. The first is to eliminate the employment provisions. The Supreme Court extended Title VII of the Civil Rights Act that includes gay and transgender persons, making this an enforceable offense for the state and not Mesa. Therefore, this entire provision is not required. However, if this council moves forward with this provision, then I ask that it mirror the EEOC laws and only apply to businesses with more than 15 employees. The second is to remove any and all prosecutorial responsibilities from the city of Mesa. As a fiscal conservative, I have concerns that the taxpayer dollars will be utilized in the prosecution of businesses for minimal fines. The time and resources, resources expended by the city manager and staff to review, investigate, and potentially prosecute a business will far exceed the proposed amounts to be levied against a business. With that said, I am fully supportive of foregoing an investigation and instead bringing the parties together in an effort to address the issues. However, if this council wants to move this provision forward, then we should make the process fair, and also hold any and all false allegations to the same level of prosecutorial responsibility, and levy the same fines that would be placed upon the businesses. Finally, council needs to know who is responsible for notifying and educating every business in the city of Mesa's jurisdiction on this new ordinance. It would be extremely and completely irresponsible to the city to enact legislation without a clear and concise plan to notify and educate our city's businesses. I strongly believe that until a plan is presented and assurances provided that every business has been notified, we cannot and should not implement any ordinance that could impact how they operate their business. Therefore, I ask that we slow the process, assign this to a committee, and allow our citizens, businesses, and the LGBTQ community to help shape legislation that is unique to Mesa. Sincerely, Councilmember Thompson." Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Brady. Frankie, I think I saw your finger up.
Yeah, no, I think just to comment on what's been said as far as, you know, I understand the concerns, you know. Me as a small business owner, I own a small business owner in West Mesa. And I, I understand, but I, you know, as commented before, there's no money that business has to spend in order to basically just do the right thing and treat people fairly. And so for that reason, you know, I would support keeping it at one. We're, you know, based on the research from other cities, I think the local staff has a higher, higher level of workers, but the rest of the cities here in the valley have one. And it's to the concerns that they're not coming to fruition as far as these tons, tons of complaints. I think this, this type of ordinance, I think, sets a values, a set of values that we want to make sure that we don't have people treated differently than others. And be that, that you have one person working for you, or 500, it doesn't matter. Discrimination is discrimination, and it shouldn't be the case, like my other colleagues mentioned. So I would support in keeping it at one. And to some other, other comments that were said around ordinances, we pass ordinance all the time, I think, I push the city to, to inform our business community to, to, to learn about this, this issue that we're passing, it passed, and really have an environment where we all can flourish together. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Spilsbury?
I just, I've done a lot of studying and asking questions and research and trying to see everything from both sides. And I just, I wanted to make the point that I found helpful, that, it's already been mentioned, but this is not a heavy-handed government ordinance trying to find people doing something wrong and catch them and, and come down with a hammer on them. This is not what this is. And there are people who feel and have been marginalized and intimidated and have not felt included. And this means a lot to those people. And if we're already saying that we, as a city, are welcoming and encouraging and inclusive, this is just a statement of those values. I don't really think it changes much. When I, when I dig deep into it and I look at what this actually means and what it doesn't mean, I don't think it changes what is already happening in our city. And I just think it's important to remember why we're doing it. And like, like Jen said, Vice Mayor Duff said, these are people. We're all, we're all people. These are our brothers and our sisters. These are, we're all, we're all equal. And they need to be, they need to feel that we treat them that way and that we see them that way.
Thank you. And I appreciate the great spirit and sentiment that's been expressed by all of our council members, and the obvious concern that each of us has for, for making a statement for our community and for protecting the rights of those who live in our community. So I just want to express my admiration for each of you and for your, your support of these concepts. It seems like we do have a little practical problem here, though, in terms of moving this ordinance forward. My, I think it's obvious that the consensus is to, to keep this on the agenda for Monday. But we do need to provide staff direction on the issue of the threshold for, for doing employment regulation. As I indicated earlier, I have been, had conversations with, with businesspeople, and they've been very pointed in telling me about their concerns for, for Mesa becoming a target forum, you know, if we have a low threshold for employment complaints. And so I think I would be with Mr. Freeman and Mr. Thompson at keeping it at the federal 15-employee threshold. Now, again, and that would be mirroring our friendly city Flagstaff to the north. The truth is that, as we've all heard, the goal of these ordinances is to not issue citations. And, you know, all of our neighboring cities have been successful at that. Literally, you know, having no citations. But when complaints come in, this is really just an opportunity to mediate and to educate and to give an opportunity for, for conflict resolution rather than escalation. So I think if we pass this ordinance and we discover that we, for some reason, are having a different experience, and we are issuing complaints, or this has become a very active thing, then something's gone wrong. That there's something wrong with our ordinance, and we, for some reason, are, are engaging in contentious litigation that we don't want. Again, the point of this is to educate and to mediate and to, to provide an opportunity for people to, to be, to protect each other. So like I said, we do need to provide some, some guidance. I think, Ms. Spilsbury, you might kind of be the tiebreaker here. What, I hate to put you under pressure, but what are your thoughts? Do you have specific feelings about the threshold for employees?
I was hoping no one would notice that, Mayor. Yeah, I see both sides to this. I really do. That's why I'm struggling. I, I definitely think if it's wrong, it's wrong. And if it's wrong for one, it's wrong for five, it's wrong for 15. And I also see the concerns of the small business owners. I probably would be more comfortable with like a five, a five number instead of a 15. But then I get the argument that if that's what, you know, other, other states and nationally, if it's 15, that would probably make more sense. And there's really good arguments there, too. Do I, do I need to actually have an opinion on this?
I just wanted to hear your thoughts. What if, just for sake of compromise, I'll throw out the idea, just for purposes of being told that this is a bad idea, let me throw this out. What if we went with 10 as a threshold? What if, what if we went with 10 as, as a threshold? That seems, again, to be a compromise number. It acknowledges that, that what's wrong is wrong, even if it's in a small setting, and 10 is a, less than 10 is, is a pretty small setting. Is there, is there any consensus around moving forward with, with that number? Mr. Luna, Ms. Duff, what do you think?
Absolutely not. I must stand at one employee. If you choose to employ someone, you choose not to discriminate in any way. I, I, I'm sorry, I can't give on this. This is a human right. It's not okay at any level. I don't care about EEOC, you know, what, whenever that was written in, what that stood for at the time or whatever. This is 2021, and it's time among all people. I don't care if you're disabled, a person of color, an age, veteran status, gay, transgender, I don't care. Not discrimination. Discrimination is not okay, is not okay at any level, and I think we have to stand for that. I don't expect it to be all this big uproar we've seen with other cities that they have very few complaints, but we have to stand for that value. And I think a lot of employment, maybe the EEOC and other cities who have had the nondiscrimination ordinances for, you know, 15, 20 years, they might be updating that. I don't know. I, I don't, I'm not worried about that. What I'm worried about, what we stand for in Mesa. And as far as small businesses, I don't know what our number is under 10, but the majority of America, a majority of our city, is small businesses. And I know we can talk about the number of employees, but I, I can't give that it's okay to discriminate against one person for any reason. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we all, all can respect that. Mr. Luna.
Mayor, we have to remember that behind that number is, is a human being. We cannot discriminate in the city of Mesa. That's not who we are as a community. And, and as you know, I've worked, I've worked on this for many, many years, so I will not budge. No one should be discriminated in the city of Mesa.
Thank you. We're, we're still, yes, Mr. Freeman, I see your hand going up.
Well, on the opposite side, I'm not budging either. So either we come to a compromise or a number, we are the number one, number 10 or 15. So I'm okay going to a lower number, but anything above one. So I'm sorry with my colleagues, I'm just going to disagree with them at this point. And I think that government should have a limited role in this. And I know this ordinance, you may say that it may not affect everybody, but I think it does. And I think we have to listen to our constituents and our concerns. So I'm going to stand there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Frankie, are you, where do you sit on this?
Yeah, you know, I, I agree with Vice Mayor Duff and, and Councilmember Luna, you know, I, you know, one is, is too many if, if people are discriminating based on, you know, orientation or whatever the, the person identifies with. I think that's too many. And I think for us to, to, I, I just see the, the, the research that's been done, the years of, of this work, trying to craft an ordinance that, you know, protects folks, but also looks at how learning from, from previous ordinances other cities have made. I think staff has, and our, our city attorneys have done a great job in crafting ordinance that, that we all should be proud of and, and really defines what we want to do. I, I agree with Councilwoman Spilsbury that, you know, I, not a lifelong Mesa resident, but me and my family fell in love with the city because the, the hope and promises that we have of, of building on top of progress. And I think this is a, a, a measure that, you know, keeps us, keeps us ensuring that we, we are progressing, moving forward, and treating everybody with respect and, and adding equality to, to that work. And so that, that's where I would stand.
Mr. Smith, what are our options here? But do we, if we reach a consensus on this number, I mean, the, the final vote on this would be March the 1st, but, but we need to, the, the ordinance that, that needs to be introduced on Monday, if, if we, if that evolves, you know, as a result of council discussion, either sometime between now and, and the 1st of March, would it need to be reintroduced and, and start over again if, if we want to make some sort of modification to, to the number of employee threshold issue?
So Mayor, after it's introduced, so, you know, we, we can make changes today, we could even make changes, you know, Monday, you know, morning. But once we go to the council meeting, we won't be able to sort of type up a change on the fly for that meeting. And so the agenda language is broad enough to include whether it's, whether it's 1 or 15 as far as the exclusion. But we need, realistically, we need direction today. If we, if we get different for what we'll introduce on Monday, if it changes Monday, we'll continue the introduction and we'll reintroduce or the introduction at the next council meeting.
Okay. So we, we can, as long as if we reach some consensus at or before the, or during the meeting on Monday, then that's what we'll be, that's the, the ordinance that we'd be, we can change it between now and, and our vote on Monday. Is that fair to say?
Well, it, it is, but we'd have to, I mean, you know, we should probably get the direction now. In other words, this is the open meeting, we should get the direction from council now. And if, if, if it changes on Monday, we'll just reintroduce. So if we can.
We can do it during the study session on Monday?
Yeah, we, well, if it, we'll have to retype it or we'll just handwrite the change.
If it's just the number.
Mayor, I think if we just keep it simply to the number of employees, then we could make, obviously, we can make that change on the study session on Monday, Monday before the council meeting. I think it's, that's, but that would be the latest at that time.
I get it. And to Jim's point, obviously, these decisions need to be making, made in open meeting laws, not, an open meeting is not behind closed doors. I'm just saying it might allow the public, you know, an opportunity to, to weigh in on, on council, and, and we might just allow it to percolate in our own thoughts and minds. Ms. Spilsbury.
I just want to throw something out there that I'm curious about. Jen, you almost got me crying there. That was really powerful, and I think we all agree with those sentiments that if discrimination's wrong, it's wrong. But if, if that's the only thing we're basing all of this off of, then why are we excluding, excluding, wow, excluding religious organizations and schools and expressive speech? And, I mean, we are making a lot of exclusions for things that people feel strongly about. And if, why would business owners? I, my email's full of 200 emails right now of people opposing this. I've heard from a lot of people, and I don't want this to be the reason why this doesn't pass or why we can't move this forward. And if, if, am I in a totally wrong way of thinking here that businesses are any different? Like, maybe, maybe that's the exclusion, even though it's not exclusion, but, you know, that's, maybe that's the compromise we make with businesses so that we have the 15 or more employees? Because, because I agree with, with everything that, that, you know, you have said, David and Jen, and, and, but I, but I see the limited government side. This is why I can't make a decision. I'm only in my second month of this. This is, this was kind of a hard thing to deal with as I'm starting out new. But anyways, am I looking at that wrong? That it's the same kind of thing, that we're making exclusions for other things that people feel strongly about, even though discrimination's wrong, right?
We can make it more restrictive, Julie, if you wish.
See, and I think those exclusions should be there. So, yeah, that's not what I'm seeing either, obviously.
Well, I, I appreciate the great discussion we've had, and, and I appreciate the huge amount of agreement that we've obviously shared on, on these issues. So why don't, we'll, we'll allow the, the ordinance to go forward as it is, but understanding that there are concerns that, that we need to reach some sort of, hopefully, at our study session on Monday, we'll have perhaps more unanimity on, on, on this issue. But I think at this point, yes, Mr. Freeman, your hand is up. Go ahead.
Well, I wish Councilmember Spilsbury would weigh in a little bit more on it, but, you know, it's, it's a 3-3 tie so far. And I, I just think for staff's perspect, from staff's perspective, yeah, they can change this, but we need some, they need some better direction, in my opinion. Because I don't think we've really set, I mean, we have one side at one, we have one side at 10 or 15. And Ms. Spilsbury, are you, are you willing to step up to the plate and hit a home run one way or the other?
I don't, I don't know who the home run would be for, but I'm going to be a big girl, and I'm going to say that I think we do it to 15 employees.
Okay. The way I'm counting noses here, and obviously, Mr. Thompson's nose is, is absent from our Brady Bunch screen here, but he did express in his written comments, it, well, it was hard to say. I think he doesn't support the ordinance, period. That was obvious. But he did also express a preference for 15. So I'm going to say that with Spilsbury, Freeman, and Giles, and Thompson expressing that support for 15, I think the consensus is for staff to prepare the ordinance with that number. And obviously, that will continue to be talked about as we go forward. And I, I won't force those who, who disagree with that to, to say that they agree, because I, but your, your point is well taken and, and respected. Council, any other, other than that point, any other questions or concerns that we ought to, to talk about related to this issue? Okay. Thank you very much. And again, thank you to Andrea and Jackie and Mr. Smith and, and all those in the, and I, I should point out that, that there's been a lot of community engagement on this as well. The Human Relations Advisory Board, our Economic Development Advisory Board, the Mesa Chamber of Commerce, a lot of faith groups, a lot of civil rights groups have all played active roles in, in looking at this and commenting on it. And, and I appreciate the way that the, the community has really participated in this conversation. And, and that will continue. So that, again, the, the schedule for this is it will be introduced on Monday and then voted on at our, the following council meeting on the 1st of March. Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes. Can I ask someone in licensing or in staff, how many businesses would be examples under this? How many businesses do we have in Mesa that's under 15 employee threshold? Do we have those numbers? I'd like to know.
Mayor, Councilman, or Vice Mayor Duff, we, we don't have a registry of businesses. So it would be, I actually, I was impressed that Mr. Luna actually had done some research on it. That's probably about the same source we would have. We could, I'm just trying to think quickly in my head. I, I don't know that we have a database like that, because we just don't have a business registry, don't create that kind of a license. We can, we can confirm and look at some of the same things that Councilmember Luna looked at, and maybe we can come up with some numbers based on what we've done with our small business programs and report back to you on Monday. But I, it's not going to be something from a, a specific record that we possess at this time that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Luna.
Mayor, we reached out to Economic Development to try to get a number of our small businesses. So 13,000 businesses here in the city of Mesa with 160,000 employees, and 11 of those, 11,000 of those businesses have 15 employees. Roughly 7,000 have less than 4 employees. So this is information that we got through MAGA, as well as another source that Economic Development referred us to. Again, we don't have business license here in the city of Mesa, so it's hard to determine the exact number, but that's at least some information that we can, we can, you know, we can work with.
Councilmember Luna, you said 11,000 with 15 employees. Is that 15 employees or more?
It's 11,000 with, have less than 15 employees.
So 11,000 out of our 13,000 businesses have less than 15 employees?
That's correct. And then at least 7,000 have 4 employees.
That's the extent of what we're saying?
Yes, that's the extent of what we're doing.
Yeah. I think we should rethink, and we can discuss it again on Monday. I, I think citizens with their input as well, but I just want to, you know, for us to realize the magnitude of what small businesses represent in Mesa. This isn't just a few businesses, this isn't a handful, this is the majority. I haven't done the math, but it's probably 90%.
Thank you. The only, and we all do need to continue to wrestle with this, but I'll just point out that there's really three prongs to this ordinance. It's, it's housing and public accommodation and employment. And so what we're, certainly, housing and public accommodation, there's no threshold, you know, as far, that, this applies to everyone, all 510,000 people in this, in the city of Mesa. What we're talking about is in the employment threshold. When we, when we get into regulating employers and possibly sanctioning employers and, and conducting hearings to, to try to resolve workplace disputes, to what extent do we want to get into that business? Do we want to, to be the forum for disputes less than 15? Or do we want to maintain, you know, that threshold that's consistent with, with the federal government, saying that as a break to small businesses, you know, we're, we're not going to, we're just, we're going to not engage in that of, in, in addressing employment complaints for businesses smaller than that. And, and as you point out, that's a significant number of businesses. That might mean that there's, given the number of small businesses in Mesa, again, my fear is that we become the go-to place to resolve employment conflicts, because if you have less than 15, you can't go to the, to the feds. So we become, you know, the hotbed of resolving employment conflicts. So we'll, we'll continue to wrestle with this, and I'm sure this, this conversation will continue at our meeting on Monday. But it's, it's good to know where we have consensus and where we need to continue to look for it. Council, any other questions before we move on? Yes, Vice Mayor Duff.
Can I ask one, one more of Ms. Alakot? Of the other cities that have these ordinances in place, how many are at, you know, the one or more? And the number of employment complaints over what duration? I just want to, I know you made a lot of comments as far as statistics on that, but if you could just review it in the context of looking at it at 15 or more, as far as what other cities are experiencing? Is this a real issue or not? And look at it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council Vice Mayor Duff for that question. So just to, to remind everyone, of the other Arizona cities, that includes Phoenix, Tucson, Flagstaff, Tempe, Sedona, and Winslow. Flagstaff is the only other city, and they were one of the first to move forward with the nondiscrimination ordinance that encompasses all the different aspects that the mayor had touched on. Goods and services, employment, and housing, excuse me. They have their employment threshold at 15. The remaining five cities within our state have it at one or more, and for the most part, had enacted that after Flagstaff in its full encompassing manner. So for the reason that, again, with consultation, very close consultation with those other Arizona partners, we had implemented the one or more for Mesa as well to be comparable with the majority of our state, as well as that the complaints that they did receive or the inquiries that they did receive were not directly related to employment concerns. So that yielded, of the very low complaints that were received, they were not directly related to employment concerns or had used the mediative process for that. Again, when we do address that there had been some referrals made, it would have been a referral it would have been a referral to the EEOC for a complaint with an employment over 15 or more. So that is where other agencies had reported that they have used existing federal processes to do some referrals for some of the complaints that were received as well. But the overall complain or inquiry from other municipalities was reported to be low. And of that, employment was an even lower concern.
And the duration, the other cities have had these ordinances in place for what, 10, 15 years? What is the duration we're looking at as far as the number of complaints?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. There is varying dates, however, we can, you know, safely average that within the past seven years or so. Between, you know, more than five years, less than a decade of all of these having very robust processes in place and staff dedicated to being able to track and measure those results.
Thank you. Mr. Redia.
Mayor, just, we're on this topic. Andrea, through your research, why did the other cities set up to one as far as your information when you had the conversation with them?
Thank you, Councilmember Redia, for that question. You know, unfortunately, that question, again, is then based to those mayor and council members that had voted upon that decision. So, you know, we can only allude to similar conversations that our council is having now in terms of the threshold of employment was based off of the projection of what the city wanted to be able to incorporate within their nondiscrimination ordinance. So from a staffing perspective, the conversations are very similar in a lot of different communities, not just within Arizona, but nationwide as well. You will definitely see varying amounts, as Councilmember Spillsbury had noted. In California, the threshold is at five. We have seen six for Omaha and some other Midwestern cities. So there is varying decisions as to why that threshold gets determined.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions on this topic before we move on? Okay, thank you very much, and thanks again to staff for all the work that's gone into this. The next item on our agenda, item 2B, is to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on the city's efforts to create and maintain an environmentally sustainable community. I'm guessing Mr. Boucher was walking up to the microphone as we speak?
Yes, good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, Counsel. My name is Scott Boucher. I'm the Environmental and Sustainability Director here at the city of Mesa. And I'm here today to give you an update on our sustainability programs. First, just to start off, I was lucky enough back in 2009 to be the first employee at the city of Mesa who had sustainability in their title. We created the Environmental and Sustainability Division that at the time was in the Development and Sustainability Department with the idea of bringing energy conservation and water conservation folks over into the environmental group, so that they were kind of decoupled from the sales of those utilities. One of the first things that we did in Environmental and Sustainability with the request of a couple of council members was to get a Tree City USA designation for the city of Mesa. And what that designation does is it just shows that the city of Mesa places an importance on trees and the fact that trees clean the air, shade, they cool cities, they make a more walkable community, and that they support wildlife. And so you'll see the sign that we have there that shows our Tree City USA designation. And then next to it, you'll also see our household hazardous materials facility. So that was opened in 2018. You'll also notice the solar panels that are on that facility. And it's part of our solar portfolio that the city of Mesa has. So back in 2009, we really didn't have a lot of solar within the city of Mesa. We had some remote locations that needed electricity that would have solar panels because it was too expensive to run power to these sites. But over the last 12 years, we've actually been able to increase our solar portfolio so that we now have approximately 6.5 megawatts of power that we have either city-owned or contracted through solar service agreements or contracted with one of our larger utility providers, Salt River Project. And that accounts for about 12% of our retail power. So just to show you kind of the beginning of the sustainability programs and then another update. This photo here will show, you'll see there's a photo down in the bottom here that shows SRP Champions of Energy Efficiency. And the city of Mesa has won that award two out of the last three years from SRP. And I think it shows our commitment to energy efficiency and the work that we've been doing across the city. And then you'll see the Lighting a Sustainable Community. Really, back in 2009 also, there was the stimulus package that was passed. And we received $4.2 million in funding to implement sustainable practices within the city. Now, there were a lot of cities that took those funds because there was some federal red tape associated to them and wanted to just spend those funds as quickly as possible, find a $4.2 million project and complete it, and just leave it at that. But in our conversations with the city manager's office, the city of Mesa took a different approach in that we wanted to spread that money across several departments, as many departments as we could, so that we could really use that as seed money for implementing these sustainable practices across the city of Mesa. Just to give you an idea, we did do energy efficiency projects, lighting and roofing projects with that. Our first LED streetlight replacements were done with those stimulus funds. We also created the Central Main Plan, which when you see the project manager on creation of that plan was Jeff McVeigh. And you obviously know the work that he's been doing using that plan and the development that's been coming to downtown Mesa and transit-oriented development. We also did our first solar project where we owned solar. We installed that out at Red Mountain Softball Field. You'll see some solar that's out there. And another part was we did what's called investment-grade audits with Siemens. And these investment-grade audits really laid the groundwork and kind of a roadmap for our energy efficiency and sustainability programs going forward. One of the things that was pointed out in that report was the potential at the Northwest Plant for taking fats, oils, and grease, or food waste, and converting those into energy. And I know that's a project that we've been here and we've talked to previously about. And that really started back in 2009 with these funds that we used. So as we get into, one of the things, we've really had a project-based sustainability program here at the city of Mesa. And what I mean by that is we have done things that save money or are budget-neutral, and they're good for the environment. And as we have done that, we haven't focused as much on aspirational goals or looking at the effects that it has with carbon emissions. But Mayor, you have brought up the, that, you know, you've had constituents that have told you this is important. And so what we've done here is we've put together a preliminary inventory of city operations and the greenhouse gas inventory that we admit on an annual basis. And so as you look, I'll just point out a couple of things here. Two of the top five that you will see are mobile combustion and employee commute. So those are related directly to driving vehicles, either employees driving to and from work, or it's employees that are driving at work. And then if you look, two of the top seven are related to water delivery facilities and wastewater treatment facilities. So one of the things I'd like to point out with that is that there is a water-energy nexus. And what I mean by that is it takes a lot of energy for our folks in water resources to pump that water, treat the water, send it out, distribute it to our residents, then collect the wastewater, treat that wastewater, and then distribute it out as effluent for groundwater recharge projects that we have. So as we talk about water conservation, I would like counsel to also understand that every gallon of water that we save is also saving energy. Because that's energy that didn't have to be put into that water to clean it up to those Safe Drinking Act standards or to collect then wastewater and treat it. And then you'll also see within here, you've got your buildings, of course, and the large portfolio of buildings that the city of Mesa has, and our street lighting are up there in the top of what our categories as far as emissions. We also looked at other cities and what they do as far as climate action plans, aspirational goals, whether or not those plans are just city operations-related, whether they're community-wide, and the metrics that they have. We looked at some of our neighbors, Phoenix and Tempe, and then also Salt Lake City and Houston. I would recommend, if you haven't read a climate action plan, I was reading again yesterday Houston's plan, and it is very well done. And, you know, most of the time when you talk about sustainability, I will be honest, Houston doesn't pop to the top of my list of places that I think about. But it was interesting with Houston, because what they discussed is that they have had three separate 500-year flood events in three consecutive years. And what they were saying, and then if you look at today, what's happening in Texas with the cold that is hitting the region, really, what they had, and this is a quote from their plan, is that sustainability and resilience go hand in hand. So Houston was pretty straightforward, that they feel that they're seeing the effects of climate change, and it's having a negative effect on their city. And they feel that it's their responsibility to do something about that. So just a quick description, the climate action plans will typically have a carbon inventory associated with it. They'll have aspirational goals that are set to those plans. Typically, what you'll see is like zero emissions by a 2050 date to kind of line up with the Paris Agreement. They'll have metrics that track the progress that they're making on those. And again, you'll see whether or not, there's typically a focus both on city operations, because we have more control on our city operations, but then also looking out wider at a community-wide plan. And just an example, if you think about the number of vehicle miles traveled by Mesa residents as opposed to just city of Mesa employees, you know, there's a large contribution that comes from our residents. So I'll go into six different areas here quickly that are what are typically found within a climate action plan or a sustainability plan. The first one is energy. And we talked a bit about our energy efficiency programs. You'll see Fiesta PD and another portion of our solar portfolio that we have with covered parking at Fiesta PD. We have, both of these buildings that you see were built to lead standards. And then you see the SRP St. Solar, that was a large project that we partnered with SRP on that was able to dramatically increase our solar portfolio. But in addition to that, I'd like to say, you know, within sustainability, there's people, planet, and profit. And the people, we typically deal with the planet and profit side. But from a people standpoint, there's a lot of folks within the city of Mesa who put in a lot of work and great work on doing these things. So when you look at energy efficiency, it's our facilities maintenance and our engineering and our IT departments that have been working on creating smarter buildings and making sure that we're using that energy that we do use wisely. And when you look at like land use and built environment, that would be our planning department and the energy codes that we have within building safety or our general plan. Those are all parts that when you look at a climate action plan, there'll be other plans that feed up into that plan. And so the city of Mesa does have those types of bones in place that would go along with the climate action plan. Urban heat has been a big topic within the valley. We had, I think, over 144 days over 100 degrees and 60 odd days over 115 degrees this year. It was a very, or last year, it was a very hot summer. So the importance of trees, we talked about it in the beginning of this presentation, but parks and open space and preserves that we have, the care of trees and the ability of those trees to create shade, make it a more walkable community or bikeable community. And then also to just, our Parks Department does a fantastic job of making sure, and this is a quote from one of the Parks members, that we don't need turf border to border at our parks. Parks has done a very good job of creating these places of active play or being able to have educational facilities that aren't necessarily just turf in embracing the desert environment that we have here. As you look with air quality then, and active transportation, that's another place in which the trees can help out by creating that shade when you're having that active transportation. And in the area of air quality, it's not just carbon emissions. The valley also does have issues associated with particulate matter and ozone pollution in our air quality. And I'll say going back, you know, into the 1990s, we were the first city that had a dust control ordinance that was adopted by the city. And so, you know, we have been a leader in this area for a long time and do a lot of good work in the area of air quality, I believe. And then with our fleet, I will also, our fleet department really has been looking hard at what might be possible with electric vehicles and has had conversations with my group, and I know the city manager's office and with the other departments, of really trying to understand where the technology is with electric vehicles and trying to prepare the city for the time when the technology catches up, that it's something that we'd be able to implement on a larger scale. Water stewardship is an example that we have been doing. The city of Mesa has been doing great work for decades. Our water portfolio, when our Water Resources Department presents to you, is very strong. They've done a great job of planning. Again, when you look at plans that are in place that go up to a climate action plan, our 100-year water supply plans would be one of those ones that would go with that. That's obviously a portion of sustainability. In addition to that, our Water Use It Wisely, the public education campaign that we have, it was started here in Mesa and is now a national campaign that you will find Water Use It Wisely throughout the country and has really done a great job in educating folks on how they can save water at home. In addition to that, we've used some grant funding and worked with the Parks Department. You'll see down in the corner of monitoring water use in parks. So establishing baselines, establishing water budgets for the parks, and then tracking those and making sure that we're staying within those budgets. And if we start to go outside of those budgets, we're able to identify that quickly and make repairs if it's leaks or whatever may be to make sure that we're not wasting that water. And then one of the things, and when I have recycling materials management today wasn't, it's not a discussion more about the blue barrel, but this is more about the operations within the city of Mesa. One of the things I want to point out is, you know, this, we must think beyond our traditional purchase, use, and disposal model that we have. We've talked about it before, that we're not going to be able to recycle our way out of our waste problem. We're also going to have to reduce the amount of waste that we create. One of the programs, as we were talking to other departments and getting updates on their sustainability programs, was the library. And they were talking about, they had the first reuse model in the city with one book in many hands. And if you think about it from that standpoint, that you're able to have a book, you check it out, you read it, you give it back to the library for somebody else to check out and then to read it. And really, that's, it's a great model on how we should really look at life as far as being able to reuse things more often. And then I would say the Red Mountain Library is a perfect example if counsel's interested in walking through and seeing a lot of different projects that we've done in one place. The Red Mountain Library is the first solar installation, I believe, that SRP partnered with the city of Mesa to see if solar-covered parking would actually work. And that was done 20, almost 30 years ago now is the original solar installation. And then you'll see the large solar panels that we installed about eight years ago. There's a lot of work that's been done with the building and facilities automation and changes in mechanical equipment. And in addition to that, we have one of our Monarch Butterfly Way stations that's there that teaches about biodiversity and the importance of biodiversity at the city, all while using low-water-use plants. So the Red Mountain Library is a perfect example of one place within the city that we really have concentrated a lot of our sustainability efforts. So in the last portion that is hit on with many of the plans that we have looked at is food and local sustainable food systems. So I talked about the water-energy nexus, but even a larger energy nexus is the food-energy nexus. If you think about the amount of energy that is put into planting, growing, harvesting, and then transporting food to us on a day-to-day basis, it is, it's a huge amount of energy and a lot of carbon emissions that are associated with food. And then a lot of times, some of that food in the United States will go to waste. It's one of the largest components of our solid waste stream. So that food to go through that process and that much energy to be put into it for it not to then be used is really something that would need to be a focus going forward with trying to reduce carbon emissions. And so I wanted to make sure we do have, you know, if you look through COVID and our And so I wanted to make sure we do have, you know, if you look through COVID and our Parks Department, they did a fantastic job of making sure that people were getting food during that time. There were people who were needing it and we were distributing it and getting it to folks. The United Food Bank is one of our partners. We've worked with them for many years and they do a fantastic job over there of making sure that as much food as they can doesn't go to waste and getting it to people. Because there's a report I would recommend, it's called the Reef Ed Report, that came out on how to improve our food systems, and it talks about the highest and best use for an apple is to eat the apple. And it seems pretty straightforward, but there's too many times, I think, within our community that, that that apple doesn't get eaten. And so really, that's the focus of those local sustainable food systems. Sorry about that. So today, we can talk about next steps. I do think as, as we present here, even though the city of Mesa has not adopted a formal climate action plan, we have had a project-based program that has been moving us forward and really, we've been making good decisions along the way. And I'm proud of the programs and the work that has been done by the, the staff here at the city of Mesa. I will also say that I think we're uniquely positioned in that the city of Mesa owns so many of the utilities between the, the water, wastewater, energy, gas, and the solid waste utilities. We are typically our best customer, our largest customer and our best customer for our utilities. Most cities do not have all of those utilities under one umbrella. And so the opportunity to work amongst ourselves in our utilities and reduce our emissions associated with that, saving energy from, that is coming from ourselves in essence, I think there's some great opportunities that are there. So with that, I will open it up to any questions you may have.
Thank you. I'm sure we've got several. Council, who'd like to begin? Mr. Freeman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey Scott, this is, that's really great news. In fact, I had a, a young lady reach out to me from ASU probably about three weeks ago about what we're doing for climate control in the city of Mesa. And I told her we do have a great plan, you know, we just don't have it probably written down as firm as we should have, but I just wanted to make some remarks. I think you're, you're 100% correct that we are in a unique situation as a provider of, of full contrast of utilities. And I like that, did you say 6.5 megawatts of renewable energy we get from other suppliers, outside sources?
Yeah, well, that 6.5 is a combination of city-owned solar and then contracted through either solar, solar service agreements and the sustainable energy offer that Salt River Projects we did with them.
Yeah. And I know SRP is putting in another 500-megawatt solar farm, supposed to be coming up. Uh, I don't know, next year. But 12% of our, you said 12% of our electricity is renewable, is, are there plans to increase that at every opportunity?
We, yes, so we do. I, I believe you'll, you'll see solar going up on the ASU development that we have downtown. And I, I also would like to mention that the city of Mesa Electric Utility is getting close to a megawatt of customer-owned solar within their utility also. And so there are plans in place of more solar that's being added, and we continue to look at any opportunity that we can to increase our renewable portfolio.
Yeah, and I think when developers, whether they're working in our city of Mesa electric grid, you know, if they could put in renewable energy, probably solar would be the key one that we, we should advocate for that, just to help our portfolio and self-sustainability. We have a lot of sunshine in Arizona, and I think we should take advantage of it. You brought up water. Are we, this is on the Grasp and Recharge, other than the Grasp, are we recharging any other areas in our city and, and our aquifers with effluent or other?
Um, I-
That might Jake West question.
Jake is behind me.
Jake is coming.
Cause you, you've talked to, encompassed a whole lot of different departments there.
Yeah, good morning, Mayor, Vice, or Councilmember Freeman. Yeah, we do, we have the Northwest Plant that does a lot of, of cleaning up the wastewater, which then we send in to Grasp as well of other areas. And we've got these projects coming with our, our project soon with the Gila River Indian Community where we're gonna be building a pipeline, the reuse pipeline, to get a lot of that effluent to where it needs to be to be sustainable with regards to the expansion of our signal boot treatment plant and just to make us be able to fulfill the agreement that we have with the Gila River.
So, and Jake, correct me if I'm wrong, so one of the challenges with Grasp is sometimes we just can't recharge there.
Correct.
And I think we talked about that, Councilmember Freeman, right? I mean, yes, that isn't, it's on, on paper, yes, we could do it, but unfortunately, there's a lot of geograph, or not geograph, geological reasons or the water tables are too high. And so a lot of times we lose that opportunity, as you know, to recharge there. And unfortunately, then it has to go downstream. And that's why, as we presented to council, what has it been, a month or so ago, how important that pipeline is to get down to the Gila's because in a sense, that is a reuse of valuable water that we can get significant value back for. So that's kind of a, for us, that's a very significant reuse project.
And that's the genesis of the, of the pipeline project, cause for the last year and a half, Grasp has been out of service because you've got mounding water, it's getting too heavy, so we, we can't fill it anymore. So while that water goes out to the Salt River and we do not get any credit for it. So it's a stranded capacity, and that's the genesis of the reuse pipeline.
Yeah, and, and that, that's great. I, I think we should pursue those avenues. As I read the reports on the Colorado River, the Upper Basin and the constraints there with the snow packs that the reduced water watershed allocations to the Upper Basin, Lower Basin, which we're a participant of, we have to be careful on our water and usage. So using it wisely is, is extremely important. So, and I advocate whenever we can become self-reliant, whether it's drilling new well sites or purchasing, and I'm bringing this up because Scott, I know this may not be in, in your discussion, but if you want me to stop, Mr. Brady, I will. But I just, I just think well sites are an extremely important component of our self-reliance as a community and a city. And that's when the restrictions on the CAP happen or from the Colorado River, we need to be prepared. But you talked about the air quality. I, I, great, you know, anything we can do to increase our air quality, and I think that's where our open spaces are, our parks, tree renewal whenever we can. I, I like that. I wish we could have more farm fields and orchards here in Mesa, but that's a gone now, a goner. But when we, when we build buildings today, if the city were to build a new building or renovate a building, which we're doing, do we look at creating a LEED-type building or an energy-saving type building? Let me just ask that question. So I know LEED is probably something that's built from the ground up with LEED materials, but are we renovating our buildings so that they're smart buildings? I think you used that word, Scott.
Yes. Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, yes, we are, we are building smart buildings. We, we have increased now, we're at the 2018 Energy Code is what is adopted, and that's a standard within the city of Mesa. We do build some facilities to the LEED standard. The LEED is, LEED is a rating system to ensure and be able to have third-party verification that you've built to that LEED standard. An example I can give, the Household Hazardous Materials Facility, we did not get LEED certification on, but we did build to a LEED standard. So we made sure that we incorporated those LEED concepts into the building, but we did not actually get the certification for it. So yes, we are building smart buildings. Our engineering folks do, do a great job, and a lot of that also gets driven by the client departments and what their needs are.
Great. Thank you, Scott. That's all the questions I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll jump in. I know that there are others that have questions as well, but, but I, I was encouraging staff to, to, to give us this presentation because I, I would like to see us adopt a formal climate action plan. I, I have been approached by different organizations over the last few years asking what the city of Mesa's, you know, 2030 plan is and 2050 plan and, and are we, to what extent are we making progress, you know, in, in response to carbon emissions? And, and so I've been asking these questions and it, it seems like a lot of, a lot of big organizations in the world and a lot of cities that we all admire are adopting goals, you know, to, to get to, to 2050 carbon neutrality and realizing they have to have a, an interim goal, you know, be on the path to, to get to that ultimate goal. And, and many cities and organizations are adopting very, very high aspirational plans and the, the rationale they have for how they're gonna get there is, well, we really don't know. You know, we're, we're gonna hope that, that some new technology occurs that will, you know, provide the magic answers for how we're gonna get to, to where we wanna be. And, and to me, that doesn't seem like a real goal at all. So I, I'm anxious for us to, to, to go through this, this, the process that Scott has described here and, and to get started on this and to talk about what are some actual very tangible things that we can do to, to get on, on, on the path to, to carbon neutrality and, and being a responsible organization. So Scott, when, when you have had this, this, this discussion in the past, you've told me that for, for us really to, to adopt those types of goals, that the first thing that needs to happen is we need to have a, some sort of a baseline from which to, to measure ourselves. And that that is, is, you know, uh, something that requires a great deal of effort, maybe even some outside assistance. Have, have you been able to figure out a way for us to, to quantify, you know, where we're at as, perhaps as an organization, the city of Mesa, and then maybe even broader than that as, as a community?
Yes, Mayor, it's a great question. So we did present the preliminary carbon emissions inventory in, in this presentation, and that was done in-house by staff. I have a staff member, Mr. Scott Unger, or Dr. Scott Unger, actually, he has worked in this area. He previously worked with EPA and has studied climate science. So we're lucky that we do have a staff member who has an expertise in this. In addition to that, Maricopa County has done a, a community-wide inventory that we can use also as a baseline. But as we look at that preliminary data, what we would have to do is there's certain standards in a carbon emissions inventory. So if we put together a climate action plan, as we're putting that plan together, we'd have to have some conversations about what standards do we want to follow and really making sure that as we set that baseline, we're putting those metrics in place and we're all in agreement of how we're going to be measuring those metrics going forward. Because understandably, if you keep changing your methodology for your calculations, it's gonna be difficult to compare back to previous years. And so, you know, if we do want to do, if it's the, the council's desire to move forward with a climate action plan, that would be something that would take some time and we would need to make sure that if it's going to be a meaningful document, we take the time and invest that time into it to make sure that it is a meaningful document. But I want to make sure that you understand that we'll still continue to move forward with our project-based program while we are putting together that climate action plan. And then what it would be is marrying those two together as we move forward. And I think the advantages with a climate action plan is that it, once we begin to measure it, we, we have, there's a saying in solid waste, if you don't measure it, you can't manage it. And so from that standpoint, we would be, begin measuring what our total emissions are and trying to manage what those are and coming back to council on a regular basis and giving you updates on progress that we've made.
Thank you, Scott. I, I appreciate that. I, and, and yes, I, I think we absolutely do want to proceed forward with, with the projects, the, the, I think, inspiring projects that we're currently involved in. But I, I would encourage us as, as a council and as a, as a community to, to do what you just described as what's necessary to adopt the formal climate action plan. I'm gonna make the suggestion that we, we have a sustainability committee on our, on our council. And I'm, I would suggest that, that we activate that committee maybe more than it has been in the past to engage on, on this topic and to, to work with staff to, to vet, you know, some of the, the issues related to what it would take to adopt a formal climate action plan. Scott would, and I know, we, we've talked in the past a lot about the, some of the hard decisions that we need to make to, to have a sustainable recycling program in the city of Mesa that likely will require some significant capital investment, either on our own or in partnership with, with Phoenix to the, to the west or other communities to the east. Is that part of this plan or is that just a, a related but separate plan?
It, again, the, the, so a solid waste plan would roll up within the climate action plan. You'll see those, those areas, you're typically gonna have in your climate action plan, you're gonna have focus areas on, on energy and transportation. And then solid waste or materials recycling, materials management, that's gonna be a portion of the plan. So our solid waste plans going forward would again be part of the structure that would build on the climate action plan.
So Mayor, I think I would see it as every department with their account, responsibility will have a component piece that'll roll up into this plan, right? So, cause you're gonna have, just like as Jake was saying, you know, the question being to Jake about water reuse and what are our plans for that and, and having sustainable, reliable water as Mr. Freeman brings up. And so that would be one component piece. And there would be even from Fleet Services, and as you know, transportation is out replacing streetlights and replacing them with the more lower energy-
LED.
LED lighting. And so we can see that what we need, I think, is, and as you're saying it, Mayor, we need the narrative with the larger kind of broader perspective about a plan that we can look at as a total organization and total goals. And then we'll break that down into these different levels that'll touch different departments and different activities so that they're all working specifically on projects and initiatives that roll up into this larger climate change plan. But that's where I think would be helpful, as you mentioned, Mayor, to go to the committee and, and kind of talk about the broader citywide objective, and then we can talk about how all these other pieces roll up and fit into it.
Great. Thank you. Vice Mayor Duff.
Yes, thank you. I'm so excited by this plan. So thank you for your work on this, Scott. We have a lot of work to do and it's something I think so many of us are passionate about and especially among our children. They know this is the pathway to their future and it is our responsibility as a government and as leaders in our community to get on this plan as soon as possible. So making a climate, climate action plan, of course, is very important, establishing our baseline goals, as the mayor had mentioned, in all the sectors that you mentioned in my departments. And then I think we should establish what our goals are, is it to use all renewable energy by 2030, 2035, to be carbon neutral by 2050, and then do annual reviews to see where we are and how much progress we're making and what steps that we can take. There's so many things in place that we can take advantage of as long as we just focus on that. For instance, the EV adoption that I like of electric vehicles, we have, we own our own electric company. We can charge the majority of our vehicles right in our own electric company and do, I, I saw, uh, street sweepers even are electric now. So as switching all our fleets into the electric, I think it's great to reduce our emissions since cars, vehicles are the number one emission point. Also, we can, I'd like to look at our planning department as far as the standards that we have, as Councilmember Freeman mentioned, and the energy sources and the tree coverage and the shade. If we can achieve a 30% shade, we can reduce temperatures by 5%. That is huge. And looking at even as residences, but anyway, as a city, we can establish some goals in our planning department, more infill incentives for infill development, a lot of things we can do on that. On water, water is a huge issue as we face more severe drought and heat. Is there anything that we're looking at in regards to gray water and how we can reuse- Is there anything that we're looking at in regards to gray water and how we can reuse some of our water in, within buildings? Can we start establishing that in our building standards? And, I don't know, it's just expansive, it touches everything that we do. And I'm looking forward to working on this and making it a priority for us this year to get things well underway and establish our goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Duff. Councilmember Spilsbury.
Yeah, I just really appreciated this presentation, so I wanted to say thank you to Scott and to your department and all of the departments represented in this. It's, as a newcomer, it's really incredible to see how much the city has done over lots of years, but there's so many different areas this impacts and so it's really incredible to see the presentation and to see all the different ways that we're working on this goal. As, I'm married to an arborist, so I especially love the trees. I think we could always use more trees. And I would support doing a climate action plan. I'm on that sustainability committee, haven't had a meeting yet, so we'd love to get started and see where we could help with that. I think this is great moving forward.
Thank you. Council, any other comments or questions on this? Mr. Heredia.
Thanks, Mayor. Just as far as process-wise, I know we have the Subcommittee on Council. Is there, is there a committee amongst departments or staff or is that something that we would, I am, based on the comments that Mr. Brady mentioned, you know, this will touch different departments and, and so ensuring that we have the information flowing to those departments and communicating with each other, I'm assuming a process internally has to be developed as well, just curious.
Scott's hesitating, but that's why he's here. So that's why we set up the office and so that, I think departments, Scott really and his staff are, have become not only the advocates for sustainability, but they really are serve in many ways as our in-house consultants for departments. And as you saw, the work that they had to do, the slide that says greenhouse gas inventory, I mean, that took a lot of work on Scott's staff and himself, working with the departments just to begin to identify those greenhouse inventories. So they're very much involved, they're, they kind of, they quarterback, they coordinate all this. So when there's a solar project going on at a library or a park, they're very much involved in that. If it's any of these other initiatives that you saw, most likely Scott and his staff are working, supporting, bringing ideas to the department. So that's, if you want to talk about the coordination, that's really where it begins with the sustainability staffing that we have.
Perfect. And then just to chime in, I also support this. Thank you for staff for working on this presentation and I do believe we need some tangible pieces that we can really keep on working on to ensure that we have a successful future on this issue.
Thank you. Other comments? I'm gonna throw out, I sense a consensus of, based on the comments that I've heard, that we would like to ask staff to proceed with, coming up with plans for a formal climate action plan, including goals on sustainability and recycling. And I'm gonna suggest again that that, that staff come back sooner than later and maybe that would initially be vetted at the council sustainability committee, but that we do proceed with encouraging, announcing a policy that we do want to adopt a formal climate action plan. Council, does that, does that reflect the consensus of our group, you think? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Boucher. We look forward to working even more closely with you on this going forward. Appreciate the good work that's been done to this point.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
The next item on our agenda, Council, is to acknowledge receipts of minutes of the Museum and Cultural Advisory Board. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Vice Mayor Duff, seconded by Mr. Freeman. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Spilsbury.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Heredia.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson is absent and excused. Vice Mayor Duff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, I vote aye as well, so that passes 6-0. The next item on our agenda is current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. Council, anything you'd like to share with us? Vice Mayor Duff.
Yes, a Saturday morning at 6:30 a.m. in downtown, I met with Downtown Mesa Association Director Nancy Horrman and along with Leo from Urban Smoke. We met with NBC Local News to promote the alfresco off Main, which is our outdoor patio and dining area in the center of downtown. And that afternoon, I went there and sat in the patio area and ordered from Gus's world-famous fried chicken. I finally tried it and listened to some live music. So it's open, the patio area is open every day and it's a great place to rest, to meet friends, to eat, just to hang out. There's live music at lunchtime and the evenings, Thursday through Saturday. On Tuesday, I was at Gateway Airport to watch the Bridge, Bridger Aerospace Super Scooper airdrop. It's a Canadian flight, firefighting training, a demonstration flight. And so they went and flew over to Roosevelt Lake, scooped up 1,000 gallons of water, whatever it was, they flew back to the Gateway Airport and they did a flyby and then dumped the water to do the training and demonstrate what they do and, and here in Mesa to prepare for their fire season in Canada. And so this is a great economic boost for them to be here using the facilities, buying fuel, staying at the hotels and all at Gateway Airport. Gateway is doing a tremendous business out there in a number of different ways beyond the commercial flight. So I'm very proud of the work that's going on there. Also, right after, Councilmember Freeman and I visited the Grove on Main Residences at Mesa Drive in Maine, the LDS Temple Development. They are about 20% leased, they have beautiful row homes, townhomes, apartments, they're absolutely beautiful, well-designed, great amenities and common areas. I posted some pictures on Facebook. The temple will be done sometime this spring, the open house is pending as to when and how due to COVID. We're very excited about this tremendous development in downtown Mesa and it's beautiful and check it out sometime. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Council, who else would like to share something? I do have a bit of sad news. I mean, I think we, we're a big organization and we can't acknowledge every time someone who's played a role in the city of Mesa as an employee or as a leader passes, but I did notice and I appreciate Councilmember Freeman bringing this to my attention, a kind of a stellar figure in our, in our history, Warren Steffi, who was a council member for many years back in the 70s and early 80s and unfortunately passed away this week at the age of 92. I just wanted to acknowledge the contribution that he made to our community and our condolences to his family at his passing this week. Council, anything else you'd like to share under this agenda items? Okay, seeing none, the next item on our agenda is schedule of meetings. Mr. Brady, what does that look like?
Yes, Mayor, just a reminder, of course, we have the study session and council meeting this coming Monday, so we'll see you then.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting by Mr. Freeman? Thank you, seconded by Ms. Spilsbury. Please unmute your microphones. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you, any opposed? We are adjourned.